Okay, with that, Ms. Ben Hodges, take it away.
Thank you, council member and Aloha committee members for inviting us to continue our Maui ESG water systems presentation from last month. And since we're kind of short on time, I'd rather than have everyone introduce themselves, I think as each person comes on the presentation, they can say a couple sentences. And we've all introduced ourselves to you already, so I think you you have a good sense of who we are. So I'd like to share my screen. You folks see it? Can everybody see my screen?
We can see it.
Oh, great. Okay, so yes, this is the ESG Water Systems Solution for All Stakeholders presentation. And before we start, I just want to note that the model we're presenting does not have a 5G component. While we do include the integration of community-based and culturally and geographically appropriate 21st century technology, the most important aspect of this model is that it is community-driven. So the community determines what technology is appropriate for whatever projects are ultimately chosen by the community. I just wanted to make that point. And then I want to give you a very quick review of last month's presentation that started on February 2. As you probably remember, we gave you some background on the Maui ESG project, which has been funded by the county for two years, almost two years now. Wanted to remind you folks what ESG is, ESG investment, it stands for environmental, social care, and good corporate governance. And also, we want, you know, we did talk to you briefly about the Ahoopua Investment Summit that most of you, I think maybe all of you on the call, attended. And so this is the slide where we left off at the last meeting. And this gives an overview of what our project is working on in this current fiscal year. And it's building on knowledge and relationships to develop actionable ESG business models, emphasizing the S in ESG, which includes labor, culture, social care, and also impacts of COVID-19, developing opportunities for local control over productive assets like water systems that build generational wealth, and developing opportunities for creating good community jobs that are outside of, that are beyond tourism. So then, the other thing we talked briefly about at the last meeting was the pilot project that was funded through the CARES Act. And I just want to describe it a little bit again, because I think there's been some misunderstanding. But that funding was to steward, not only steward the streams, but to develop community capacity to measure and monitor those streams. And the community members who were hired to work full-time for two months, used sophisticated measuring and monitoring tools, they learned how to use those tools, and collected data electronically on their existing phones. And the mapping app that they used was developed by NRDS, which was developed locally in Haiku. And that allowed the participants to enter the data where they were, which was generally offline in East Maui, where they had no broadband access, and then to upload that information onto the internet. And that was a really great opportunity for the community to build capacity. And although folks are not getting paid anymore, they are doing it intermittently on a volunteer basis, and they're also looking for additional funding. And that was Namoku Alkuni Okaulahu'i that did that project. So just as a reminder, the purpose of all of this is to begin developing the infrastructure for a new economic future that includes appropriate investment models based on community-determined ESG standards, which hold investors accountable. And this is important because we need to remember how vulnerable we are. This slide, which I can't talk too much about because I don't really have a science background, but this is just a reminder that we do not have the storage capacity, built-in geological storage capacity of Oahu, because Maui is just much younger. So we need to really think about how we care for our water systems and realize how important it is that whoever is controlling that system, their interests need to be aligned with the greater community, because our lives depend on it. And going back to the community engagement process. So that's the other piece of this model, is that the key is community. And any governance or financial model that's developed for operating our water systems has to be based on true engagement from the community. And it can't be something that's just seen as kind of, oh, it's an obligation, we'll have a community meeting, or we're gonna just check that box, right? And these are not, this is not meant to be a comprehensive list of everything that the community is, all the questions that need to be answered. It's just sort of a beginning of thinking about, you know, who actually is the community? How does the community best serve, how is the water system best served the community? And we had a lot of testifiers talking about different aspects of that. How do we improve the watershed? What do we invest in? And what is the current condition, right? So not just an engineering study, but back to the boots on the ground, the people who are on the system, who know the system, similar to the folks who were, who got the CARES funding and did the project I described. Interaction with different governance structures. And we have been reaching out since the last meeting, trying to determine what this engagement process should look like, because it's probably the hardest part. And we have talked to quite a few different people, and different things have come up, just like the broadband issues, how do you find that right kind of access, right? Also, ownership title, you know, who really owns what? And these are not easy questions. How do you make sure DHHL and OHA get their portion of the leases, however this happens? So the other thing I wanted to just add, too, is, and Gita's gonna really talk in detail about this, but you know, you want to bake this all in at the beginning. You want to have all these processes in place at the beginning, but you also have to know that that's not going to guarantee everything. You want to also have an audit, a way of tracking at the end, so that you bake these processes in, and then you have this vehicle, this mechanism for making sure that you're meeting the community needs. So with that, trying to be quick here, but I'm gonna pass it on to Gita, who's gonna give a quick introduction and then continue with our presentation. Gita?
Mahalo, Shay. Aloha, everybody. We've met many times. My name is Gita Swami. I'm managing partner at Io Task, which is an innovation consulting company. I'm also a representative to the Equals Global Partnership of the United Nations, and I sit on the board of the recently formed MIT World Bank Consortium for Digital Infrastructure in Land, Water, and Air. So getting to sort of the meat of the matter here, I know that when we left it last time, we had discussed the fact that, you know, ESG was part of the decision-making of any entity. And this is sort of novel, because I think historically, it has not done, it has not been done. But one of the things to keep in mind is that any good community-based system will incorporate key system variables that are ESG variables. As an example, under the E category, four particular systems that we're talking about, we can incorporate variables such as watershed protection, resilience, you know, efficiency, reliability, and safety of the water delivery, reduce the wastage, and increase wastewater reuse. These are well-established variables. And the other thing to keep in mind is, these variables connect beautifully in a mapped one-to-one to global ESG standards, such as the UNSTG. And we've listed some of the icons that describe the UNSTG principles, or the GRI. Similarly, in the social end, we also have, we can, we can create special ESG variables that are used as part of the governance and the operations of the entity itself. As an example, economic participation by stakeholders, or entrepreneurial support, or community or worker safety, and our cultural preservation. And then we can also add G variables that are related to the corporate governance, by putting in things like transparent stakeholder communication, or the use of community co-management and ownership of the water resources, et cetera. So I don't want to do a laundry list of all the variables. The idea is just to keep in mind is that the ESG is going to be part of the day-to-day of a community-owned enterprise. Next slide, Shay. So while one can't give you the answer until one has done the work, in terms of the exact, specific structure and nature of the entity, the important thing to keep in mind is, a good governance structure, and a good, good, good design for a community-owned or entity, follows eight critical key principles. And this has been seen in examples around the world, that community-owned and community-operated entities must have certain governance principles that have to be followed in the design. The first is very clearly, having clearly defined boundaries between common pool resources. So, you know, what people can and cannot do, and what the boundaries of ownerships and rights are. In a poorly-defined context, that creates chaos and confusion. So it's really important to be very clear. The second is a congruence between how those resources are allocated in proportionality to the costs and the contributions of the individuals. And that's also very important, and sort of plays to the notion that the community has to be a participant and a beneficiary of a system, and provide, you know, outsourcing it to something completely different fundamentally disturbs that principle of congruence. The third is, of course, the notion of collective choice, whereby it's important to keep in mind that, you know, that those that are affected by the rules, those that it has an impact on, also have the ability to modify it. I think it's a very bad situation from a structure if you do not have that kind of, you know, collective choices, and, you know, have people who are impacted drastically, and I believe in Hawaii, a lot of people have been impacted drastically by the recent rains, for instance, but have no power to modify those. The fourth is accountability, in, 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 through the monitoring of resources and user behavior. The fifth is the notion of sanctions, a graduated schema of sanctions for people who, for, for, for stakeholders that violate those clearly-defined boundaries and rules of allocation. And those, the interesting thing in a, in a community-based arrangement is, those are actually executed by the internal stakeholders. So you set up a structure, and that's what you do in a community-owned company, where it self-regulates, because everyone is a stakeholder. Of course, it's important for all this to work, to have rapid, low-cost conflict resolution mechanisms. And historically, most community-owned systems do have it, and we can talk about examples of it after this. And the, the, the seventh and most important principle is the notion of local autonomy. Once you create the structure, there is limited interference by government bodies in its running. You know, the rules have been clearly laid out, and it self-regulates as much as possible. And finally, you know, in order to keep simplicity, the governance of the structure is organized in multiple layers. So really, you don't, everybody isn't participating in everything, but they're participating in what's relevant to them, which means you could actually distribute, you know, a lot of the decision-making at different parts in the water system. So these principles are well-established. They were put together by actually a Nobel Prize-winning economist by the name of Eleanor Ostrom, and her, and her work focused on essentially the design of community-owned systems. Next, Shay, next slide, Shay? Okay, so what we're proposing to do here is, it's actually, we aren't doing something that hasn't been done before. It has been done before. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to bring together best practices in well-established areas to create the innovation of the CUC. So, number one, the community-owned entity is at the intersection of three different areas, all of which have very good examples. The first is the notion of a corporation, and most businesses done via the notion of a corporation. So there is nothing scary or, you know, radical about setting up a corporation. The second is the notion of a community-owned structure. And once again, there's nothing so radical about a community-owned structure. There are worldwide examples of this working very successfully for common shared public goods. As an example, there is the New Zealand Maori dairy farms, a very beautiful example, which I think Ian will talk a little more about. There is the common-based, commons-based forest cooperatives and water cooperatives. Water cooperatives have existed for a long time, and most systems actually do function in that manner. And finally, there is the notion of a public-private partnership or collaboration. It is true that those are much more common in Europe, and, you know, than in the United States. But part of it has to do with the fact that, you know, you have to have commonality of, the design has to be done right with an understanding of a commonality of shared goals for these to work well. And there are certainly very good examples, like the Laguardia Project, or the Indiana Toll Road, which have worked even in the United States. Next slide, Shay? Okay. Yeah, thank you. So the point to keep in mind is that creating a community-owned company is one of the few ways by which we can provide the community the ability to shape the design principles, to align all the stakeholders, by making them all part of the same ship. And the one big difference between taking this approach and what has been done in the past, is the community now is an owner, and therefore participates in the decisions and trade-offs and choices that this entity, entity does. The second important thing to take away with this kind of structure is that the community, the, the, creating a CUC-type entity builds equity and value for all the stakeholders. So if this entity does well, the economics flow participatively. And I think that's one substantive difference. And the third and most important thing to keep in mind is that by designing this and incorporating ESG objectives into the governance, into the day-to-day operations, into the audit processes themselves, you can actually ensure that this entity operates to balance economic sustainability and the greater good. So I think the net result is that there are less conflicts and less contention, because what we aim to do by creating such a structure is to make everybody a partner in the process. So, this point, next slide, Shay, and I think that's Ian's slide, so I will turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Gita. And my name is Ian Chan Hodges. I'm working on the Maui ESG project, as Shay said, for a number of, about a year and a half now. I wanted to actually, before I start on this slide, and this is sort of taking off on what Gita was saying, I should go back to something when we presented the first half of this, the first part of this, back in February, something that a council member, Lawrence Fernandez, said towards the end of our presentation, that I actually thought was very interesting and appropriate, is she talked about the fact that we're, we're so accustomed in Maui County, and she's talking about Molokai, which is true county-wide, to having projects imposed upon us, that basically, it's hard to realize sometimes that we don't always have to play defense. And that basically, what we need to be doing is looking to empower our community to have the confidence that this is possible, that we can actually do things where there's community control, and we have the building experience to actually be able to do that. And so with that being said, and kind of going off on what Gita said earlier, there are a lot of, a lot of examples of community-based projects. Gita already mentioned the one in New Zealand, and also there are, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
There are the water cooperatives. As you can see here from the slide, there's close to 3,300 water cooperates in the US. So just in terms of water systems, there is a lot of examples of community-controlled water systems that are both on the cooperative model, and a little bit more on what, what Gita was talking about, the Maori-owned dairy. This is something that's actually driven by Maori values, and particularly the value of what they call guardianship, and I can't remember the exact Maori word for that, but it's similar to the Hawaiian concept of kuliana. But basically, they have a system set up there where they're, they're getting milk supply from all these different local farmers, and they are creating, they're creating economic activity, and doing it in a way that actually fits Maori values. And another example that Gita just touched on, is there is the study that's been done on immunity-owned forests. And this is an example here, it's from Mexico, Guatemala, Nepal, and Namibia. And this is something where the community actually does own and control the forest, and maintains it, and, and it has basically the stewardship of it. And not only is this a good way to actually conserve the forest, and basically maintain biodiversity, it's also a way to generate revenue that's actually reinvested back into the social service and development of communities. And that's something we're also looking at with this overall model, being able to put money back into the communities. Example that Shay used was, with the community actually doing the water monitoring. That's what we've really seen from talking to the different communities in East Maui and elsewhere, is that there's a real desire for the community themselves to be able to have a way to get paid to take care of the, the Ina and the water, and that sort of thing. Next slide, please. And I think Imogen's next on this one. Imogen?
Hi, thank you. And thank you, council members, for letting us present today. My name's Imogen Rose Smith. Most of you know who I am already. I'm an ESG consultant, and I've been working with Ian and Shay on the Maui ESG project before there even was a Maui ESG project. So, you know, I think the question that Councilmember King and others brought up when we were here in February was really, you know, this all sounds great, where's the money gonna come from? And so we wanted to go a little bit more into the process of what this would look like. So, you know, we would, we would start by engaging the shareholders to identify the needs that the community has, and what they want to do. And, you know, Ian and Shay in particular have really already started that process with the support of the council and others. And then also identifying governance structures that meet those stakeholder needs. We would then look at the assets that exist, and consider what, what the revenue is, what are the potential other sources of revenue, and put in place an ESG framework to ensure that the community needs and values are met and represented. You know, and at that point, depending on what the asset is, it could well be that this isn't something that meets the sort of the revenue threshold that would be necessary to make it attractive to outside investors, in which case it may be that the county decides, we're just gonna do this with bonds. And obviously, when you're talking about bonds, you're still talking about outside investors, and there are still outside investors that are gonna want these kind of bonds, particularly if they're done as, say, green bonds. But, you know, in the event that this is an asset, and we do, we do think from the analysis we've done, that we'll get to in a minute, that there's certainly assets that would reach this threshold, that, that other investors would be interested in, then we, or you would go out and get the capital for those, those investments. And there are different investors who have different agendas. So again, it might be a university endowment that's looking for a certain return, or it might be that it's some kind of not-for-profit investor that has a non-financial interest in ESG investing. And so then those would be the types of investors that you, that you would go after. And then, once those investors have been identified, you would sort of structure the deal in a way that they get their returns, and there is a long-term plan for, for what is gonna happen to these assets. Next, next slide, Shay? I think this goes back to either you or Ian.
Yes, we had a volume problem.
That goes back to me. Thank you, Imogen. And on this slide here, I wanted to actually take a look at sort of the timeframe. And I also wanted to address just really briefly, the title of the slide, which is Roadmap for Developing Community Public Private Water Partnership. In some ways, you can actually substitute the word "community" for "private" there, but basically a community, public-community-water partnership. And, and another point I was gonna make is, it does say here, months one to three, and months three to six. In a lot of ways, these are all parallel activities, and each sort of happens simultaneously. But the two major players in this part are actually the community and the county. So I'll start with the, the little box there, the yellow box on the left, community design process. And that's already started, but that's basically, you know, forming workgroups within the, working groups in the community, to identify issues that need to be addressed. I'm related to warsons, and there's quite a number of those, as we know. The second part here is just the council, and that's, of course, you folks, deciding whether or not you do want to take action and, you know, support community ownership of the system, including this design process. And the next part, and this has already been addressed a little bit by Imogen and, and Gita, is the, the governance structures of basically looking at, and supporting communities, the community in terms of figuring out what, what governance structure best serves the community's needs. How do you incorporate ESG investment and potentially bonding into that? And also identifying, you know, what structures you want to be able to do. The, the, the third, and the fourth and final thing is the budget allocations. Basically, you know, the county decides they want to move forward with this, is looking into what, what is actually gonna take. And that's kind of similar to the discussion that was had earlier with Director Boz, about what kind of, you know, budget allocations it takes to be able to do this. And all, but a key part of that, too, is the continuing community education, and kind of seeding the community ownership structure. Next slide. This slide here kind of goes into the next steps. And again, in some ways, these already have to be started, and have been started on, in talking to the community. But basically, what we're looking at here is, this is basically the process of having, if the county does decide they want to be able to do an acquisition of water systems, they do want to have that end up being in the community control, there's sort of a different stage, process to that. And this is what this, this slide actually looks at. So the first thing that goes in parallel with the county taking on the water system is the community has decided on what the ownership structure is, and basically starts, starts that process. And continuing with the community and financial allocation with that, and this part would actually probably require some county funding. The county's very specific role would actually be the move to take over the water system, whichever one we're talking about. And we, again, we had a discussion, you folks had a discussion with Director Boz about that a little bit earlier. But part of that would be actually introducing MOU between the county and whatever new entity the community had created, contingent upon requiring the assets. And then basically, this goes to the issue of, you know, what's the county's capability to actually manage this? There might be a need to hire an interim management company to be able to do it. But basically, the, the, the new entity that was created for the community would also go into expertise, depending who's involved, whether we're talking about East Maui, or we're talking about the Waileka Water System, or some other one, is going to the local people on the ground who've actually been maintaining the system for a long time, and figuring out how we can work with them. And then basically, also at the same time, this goes back to the revenue generating model, is we want to be able to have a system that generates enough revenue to go back into the community, so the community can help support the watershed and the whole system. And that would include actually having funding for the, the pilot project, containing some of that that happened in East Maui, in terms of monitoring and measuring the streams.
So now I feel like Ian was stepping on my lines a little bit, because this slide, in some ways, reiterates what, what you were seeing in the previous slides in terms of how would, how would this process work? So, and by the way, to be clear, we're talking about water assets, but this could equally well apply to other types of infrastructure assets. So, you know, the, the county and the community would identify the asset that they want, that they want to acquire. Then likely, the county would seek to acquire that asset, and in this case, assign, assign the entity the water leases. That asset would then be transitioned into a, basically a public-private partnership with a deal management team. That team would be responsible for doing the activities such as seeking the outside capital, working with the communities, and so on and so forth. And then they would also, in turn, identify a team to operate and manage the asset. And it's important to recognize here that while you're talking about a, a community-owned system and community management of the watershed, you're also talking about sort of a professional management team, albeit that that professional management team itself could come from the community, and/or part of the mandate could be to train people in the, the community to take on those roles and responsibilities. But I think, you know, it's, and this came up in the presentation before, it's clearly very important that, that the people operating the system know how to operate the system. And both from the community perspective and the perspective of the investor, they want to know that this is being professionally managed. So that very much has to be and is sort of part of the DNA of the process. And then, you know, from, from the state's perspective, it really fronts onto this just as it would any other entity, right? The, the responsibilities are the same, the sort of the, the legal The, the responsibilities are the same, the sort of the, the legal requirements are the same. All that is changing is we're talking about a different owner and a different ownership structure. Um, next slide please. So we had, we were fortunate enough, um, over the summer to, and, um, gosh, it seems like a long time ago. To have, um, some resources to be able to do some financial analysis of both the E M I system and the, uh, Waileku system. And, and to be clear, in both cases, we were, we were working with the data that, that we had. And there clearly needs to be a much greater assessment and much, much more information that, that we would have and/or others would need to have in order to truly do this assessment. But these next two slides kind of give you a sense. Um, and so from a very high level, you know, what I would tell, well, so in the case, uh, in the case of sort of the E M I analysis. What it shows is that, um, you know, ultimately, you know, this could be a very attractive investment. If it was structured the right way, if E M I was getting paid a reasonable rate for water delivery. And likely if there was some additional revenue, probably, and this was going to be the case in the second slide as well. But probably in the case, in the, in the form of some kind of energy asset. So, and again, what you will see on both of these is that, you know, the, the real costs obviously are not in, um, buying the assets. The real costs are in what is going to cost to repair and upgrade. And so that likely will be sort of in the, and Gita talked about this a little bit, um, in our previous presentation. But it's going to be some, you, you kind of think of it as somewhere in the sort of seventy-five to one hundred and fifty million kind of a range. Then again, that could be, that, that sounds like a lot of money I recognize. But for large investors, that's actually good, right? Because they want to be writing bigger checks. So depending on the economics, that could in fact be very attractive to someone. Um, next slide please. Again, we did, um, the same kind of analysis for the Waileku Water Company. Again, we had access to some information. Um, again, there are financials from, uh, twenty seventeen that we were able to look at that effectively show you that currently, or as of twenty seventeen, and from what I can tell, the situation hasn't improved. The, the asset is losing money. And again, the, the costs, I mean, obviously the, the, if, if the cost goes down to two million and you're not buying land, that makes it cheaper to buy, but the real cost is still going to be associated with what it cost, what, what is required to, to upgrade the infrastructure. And then the real question for this system, um, is what kind of additional revenue can it generate in order for it to have the kinds of returns that could both give back to the community and be attractive to an outside investor? And without more information on the system, it's hard to say for sure what that would look like. But with more information, it should be pretty easy to determine. Next slide, I think that's my last one Shay.
That is, it's my turn. So just to kind of wrap up, we have a couple more slides, but what we wanted to sort of show you was an overview. Whether you're talking about Waileku Water Company, whether you're talking the E M I system, what we see is sort of basic costs for making this kind of transition to a community-controlled governance structure. So, uh, Matt Rosner is next and he's going to get into the details of an engineering analysis. And of course, the, the systems are very different and the scope could be very different, but you're probably looking at two hundred to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Incubation and advisory services, which covers a lot of what Gita and Ian were just talking about. And I'm going to show you a, another slide that gets some detail. That's probably around two hundred and twenty-five. Legal services, that's always hard to determine. And of course, it does depend how much is done in-house. And, um, I think even Sandy Baz kind of referenced that. The watershed pilot, uh, based on the CARES funding, if you had a full-time six-person crew for an entire year. That general estimate would be about three hundred and sixty if you include thirty thousand in equipment and software. And that, that in the beginning is kind of a pilot, but long-term that would be funded by the actual, um, the, the actual investment, right? By the actual system. And, and again, these other costs would also get paid for ultimately through the investment. And then just so you could see what these incubation advisory services sort of break down to, you have data gathering, customer stakeholder requirements, revenue stream design, uh, risk management, operations cost design, financial models, E S G impact models, financial structuring, uh, R F P contract draft, presentation packaging, obviously investor outreach. And the key thing of course is stakeholder education consensus process. And I just wanted to add as a final thing, um, one of the, um, one of the things that, one of our objectives in this current year, uh, for the, uh, Capital Deployment for Community Need, um, grant that we received from the county was to create a task force. And so we are actually, this is, these are our initial members. Some of you have met some of them because they were at the summit. But you can see there's a real mix of people with E S G pension fund, private equity. Some are investors, um, some have renewable energy backgrounds, um, foundations. And, um, and some academics. And the idea is that they can help us. And they already are helping, meeting with community members and such. But to help provide the education the community needs so that they do have the confidence and feel like they can make these decisions about governance and financial structures. And that of course, again, goes back to the key thing that this is meant, this has to be community-driven or it's just not going to work. So anyway, with that, I would like to stop sharing my screen and, um, introduce Matt Rosen, who is going to talk about, um, the actual engineering assessment.
Hello Shay. Rosner, you have your, you could go ahead and share your screen.
Okay. Everyone able to see that slide?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. Uh, first of all, aloha everyone. Mahalo for the opportunity to share with you today about assessing water delivery systems. Just a little bit about myself, because I realize I am a new face in front of the council and everyone else on the ball today. Uh, my name is Matt Rosner. I'm a hydrologist and a professional water resource engineer. I've been practicing over here on Kauai for about fifteen years now. These days mainly working with, uh, different community groups on watershed conservation and stream restoration efforts. Uh, including the Waipua Foundation where I run a stream restoration project. And, uh, working for Earth Justice and several other community groups over here, doing water studies to support petitions to restore in-stream flow to the water streams. I've also worked in the past with the U S G Labal Survey as a hydrologist and for U H, under research appointments and worked in the, the private sector as well. Almost on all of the islands, uh, have not done a lot of work in, on Maui in the past, so. Call my, for the kind of the general nature of this presentation today. If we want to get into any specifics, I, I may need to get back to you, but I'm trying to get up to speed on Waileku and East Maui irrigation system as much as possible. But again, kind of just going to keep this general and I wanted to start to, to frame this discussion in terms of, uh, looking at the water diversion and delivery systems as assets and liabilities. Um, I think we can all agree that, you know, these sugar air ditch systems are important community assets. Uh, not just on Maui, but, you know, all of the islands. In their ability to move water from wet areas to dry areas, which is something that can definitely, uh, raise the ceiling in terms of, uh, potential food production, fiber production, energy production and all the other uh, resources that lead to sustainability. Uh, I think it's important to also point out that, uh, these systems can be liabilities because of their impacts, potential impacts to, uh, infrastructure, property, human safety. Human life, first of all, you see that picture on the bottom right there, that's Kaloka Reservoir. I was here on Hawaii in two thousand and six when the dam up there failed and some people lost their lives. And, uh, you see the other photo there of that, you know, amazing old plume structure. Which, uh, I think this has come up many times already in, in talks today that a lot of this infrastructure with these old sugar era water systems is old. It's a hundred to a hundred and thirty years old. So, uh, you know, structures are designed with a lifetime in mind and, and some of it may be, you know, approaching its lifespan or well beyond its lifespan. So important to have good information about, uh, you know, the, the physical condition and the expected longevity of the different components of these ditch systems. So just kind of wanted to frame that in terms of the need for this type of engineering assessment that I'm going to go on to describe. Just in, in being able to understand, you know, the capabilities and, and the potential that these systems do provide for sustainability efforts on the island. And then weighing that against, uh, you know, the potential risks and hazards and liabilities associated with these systems if they're not well-operated and maintained. Okay, you guys have probably all seen this, uh, information before this came out in a U S G S study, I believe just last year. Uh, looking at projected changes to the hydrology of the island of Maui with, uh, future climate change scenarios. You can see they analyzed two different scenarios, uh, but the images on the top are for a drier future climate scenario and on the bottom for a wetter future climate scenario. There are some consistencies in the, in the results of their analysis between the two. Uh, mainly in that central Maui and southwest Maui are projected to become drier in terms of rainfall and recharge under either a drier or wetter future climate scenario. And also noteworthy here, you have, uh, the, some areas of East Maui, actually a lot of East Maui is projected to generally become wetter. Even under the drier future climate scenario. And definitely under the, the wetter future climate scenario. And then you've got West Maui that's, uh, kind of just more indicative of the, the future climate trend. If you, if we expected drier future climate, we would expect drier conditions of West Maui. And likewise, the wetter future conditions. So obviously, the areas of central Maui have been important historically for food production, agriculture. I expect that will continue to be the case in the future. From what I know about Maui, it's some of the, uh, most appealing land in terms of the terrain and soils. And the ability to continue to move water from other parts of the island to central Maui seems like it's something that would definitely benefit the overall community there. So I want to move on from looking at, uh, you know, these water systems as assets to recognizing that there are, you know, potential risks and hazards associated with a lot of the old infrastructure that makes up these systems, particularly with the, the dams, if you have storage in the system, like, uh, the Waileku water system does. I'm sure, uh, this is still familiar to everyone in the recent events around the state with flooding and the evacuation from the dam safety scare on Maui there. Just kind of reminds us that, uh, you know, a lot of this infrastructure was developed and built during a time when there really wasn't much downstream development. And that has changed. And also something that has changed is we have new standards for dam safety. So, you know, when looking at these, uh, structures, particularly the dams, you know, we need to kind of look at them in a whole different light. And they should be, the risks and hazards associated with them should be periodically reassessed. Another recent incident, this was just last week Thursday. We had a large landslide across Honolai Road here in Honolea, here in Honoleas as we speak. Trapped on the, the side of the river that's to the right of the, the image to the lower right there. D O T has already revealed that a, an abandoned irrigation tunnel was at least partially blown for this slope failure. You can see it in the upper left image there in circle. They're still looking for the source of water into this tunnel, but this, uh, particular slope has had chronic instability. And we're realizing now that, you know, it could be that, you know, part of an abandoned irrigation system has contributed to the chronic, uh, mass wasting of the slope that we've seen in the past. And it's kind of another reminder that, you know, there is, uh, kind of a kuliana that comes along with these maintenance and management of these systems. I, I do see a lot of old abandoned ditch systems, you know, when I'm working up in Mauna Kea areas that continue to affect, uh, the hydrology of our watershed, the way that water, uh, is moved around and the erosion that it causes. All sorts of drainage issues, uh, definitely on a smaller scale than what we see here with this landslide. But, uh, it just shows you, you know, potential consequences of ignoring, uh, the maintenance and proper management of these types of systems. Okay, I wanted to spend the rest of my time just kind of describing what an environmental and engineering assessment for these types of water diversion delivery systems should include. First and foremost, you know, describing the condition of the infrastructure. Uh, and when I talk about the infrastructure, I'm, I'm talking about not only the ditches, uh, the tunnels and plumes that carry the water, but also the controls like the diversion dams, the intakes for the diversions, the monitoring stations and for systems that have storage would be the dams and the reservoirs also. This does require physical inspection, uh, kind of the boots-on-the-ground work that Mr. Baz had talked about. There's really no way to do this completely with remote sensing methods like the, uh, the LiDAR, uh, type of analysis that we heard about earlier in presentations. Other, uh, need for physical data from the field could include flow measurements to try to understand, uh, where the system is, is gaining or especially losing water. You know, if you have particularly leaky segments of the ditch, uh, those would need to be identified in an assessment like this. To be able to make some recommendations for how to, to treat that. Second on the list here, safety concerns, you know, should, probably should have been listed first. I already talked a little bit about the safety concerns associated with, you know, some of this antiquated dam infrastructure. But that's not the only safety concern. I know there's, you know, often recreational use of the ditch trails up in the Mauna Kea areas. And, um, you know, oftentimes there are people walking out onto, you know, old plumes and, uh, walkways over gulches where, you know, there, there definitely could be other safety concerns that should also be addressed in an assessment like this. Uh, where, where this assessment would kind of veer away from a traditional engineering assessment would be on this third bullet item here in terms of, uh, kind of more of an ecological or biological assessment of how these, uh, diversion intakes have been impacting, uh, aquatic stream life, including O'pu and O'Pi. Uh, that need to move Mauna Kea to Makai as part of their life cycle to thrive in these systems. That gets, you know, well-recognized and many of the streams that are being diverted on Maui and around the state have now been assigned these in-stream flow standards by the Water Commission. So there needs to be, uh, some modification of the intakes for these streams that have these flow standards established. And in some cases, that's as simple as going up and, you know, opening up a sluice gate or removing some flashboards just to allow the, you know, the necessary water to bypass the diversion dam. But in other cases, you, you have more complicated situations where the diversion of dam itself might present a barrier to fish passage. And, uh, more significant modifications would be needed to the intake structure. So that would be something that, uh, this assessment would include and, and should, you know, include engineering expertise, but should also require the expertise of a, a stream biologist or a stream ecologist to help make those determinations on what barriers to fish passage exists at these, uh, full diversion sites. Additionally, you know, accounting for changes in flow diversion due to the in-stream flow standards, due to losses from the system over time, you know, maybe poor maintenance has led to, uh, certain areas becoming more leaky. Definitely know that climate change in Hawaii has reduced, uh, our base flows and streams or our flows that we can expect during dry periods. So, uh, in terms of developing or an estimate of system capacity. I know in the past, you know, these systems were historically run to maximize water transfer. And basically they were designed to take all the water during, uh, dry periods and, and more, uh, moderate, you know, stormy periods, not during the high flows. But we know now that we need to find a better balance between, uh, diverting water and allowing the water to move through their, their natural stream channels to support aquatic life. So maybe this assessment could also develop an estimate of, you know, a real system capacity and not some artificial capacity based on the, the idea that we can just take all the water from the stream whenever we want. Well, this has been brought up already, you know, opportunities for improvements in efficiency. I think this is again, important to note that these systems are very old, a hundred plus years old in many cases. And there are, has been a lot of new technology developed over the last hundred years that, you know, could be adopted and, uh, utilized to improve efficiency of these systems. So that, that would be something else that should be, uh, specified in these reports. Uh, specified in these reports, and I would say that, you know, probably one of the more. Important uh components of this type of study would be the cost estimates, uh certainly for decision makers in terms of uh. You know, looking at the value of the system. Uh, and what kind of costs are going to go into it for needed repairs and modifications like I was talking about, but also the the recurring costs. For system operations and maintenance, which would include monitoring. And again, you know, I kind of broke this out into two separate uh bullet points here, you know, repairs for water diversion and transmission would be more. Towards, you know, analyzing the existing conditions of the ditch and the tunnels and the plumes. And determining what would need to be done just for efficient transfer of water, but then, you know, in addition to that, you have. Maybe a need for modifications at the intake structures like I was talking about to account for the in-stream flow standards. And removing barriers to fish passage, and imagine these can be very expensive types of projects, if you're talking about construction projects um far up in the Mauka areas. Um, the cost can certainly add up, so I think it's good to, you know, have this type of assessment done, so. Decision makers can go into this uh process, well informed about the the value of the system and needed. Assets that are going to need to go into uh modernizing, repairing the system and also operating and maintaining the system. And then finally, community engagement, I feel like this is always important, projects like this, particularly any projects involving, you know, management of our water resources, I feel like. Our our local communities have a lot of collective manao that should be incorporated into uh planning processes whenever possible. So, that's all the slides I had prepared today, just kind of want to leave a little bit of time for questions and answers if possible, but just wanted to say mahalo again for giving me the opportunity to share.
Mahalo, Mr. Rosner for your presentation, um, real quick, members, I'm aware of the time and aware of your time, we do have a. Five o'clock recess, um, great committee meeting, so I did want to give some staff some time. Uh, prior to that meeting, but uh members, are you okay with a a round of questions for our presenters? Yeah, okay, uh, we'll just go down the line, uh, first we have Committee Vice Chair, uh, Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair, I only have one question, uh, thank you guys all for your beautiful presentations, uh, real quickly. On the program that was in the Hawaii uh data collection program. Uh, I looked up some of the pay the pays, it was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of co of cares money. Uh, what was the hourly rate for your workers at that time, you you know it off the top of your head?
Um, yeah, so it it varied, um, but it and that included benefits. And and that was, the estimate I gave is for a twelve month period, so they were only paid for two months or actually less because there was a week they were off, but I think the wages ranged from fifteen to. Twenty-five dollars an hour depending.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Hodges, uh, I have no further questions, Chair.
Mahalo, Member Johnson, next we have uh Councilmember King.
Thank you, Chair, um, thanks for the presentation, guys, you did a really good job of of uh team tagging there. Um, so, um, I think it you're starting to kind of clarify for us what you're talking about, but I still am not quite clear. Uh, I the model that you're showing us has the government buying the entity. And then a COC actually managing it, so is that a good short explanation of what you're proposing? Because I know you have the option of of, you know, community. Funding as well, but it sounds like from your presentation that that may not be realistic.
So, um, can I just take this and address, yeah?
Yeah, you can take it.
So typically, the way it works is the government um doesn't transfer the ownership of the asset. But they provide a concession to operate the asset, right, because in effect, you don't want to give it to public assets. Uh, but you know, it's a long duration, hundred year asset, a hundred year concession, I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, so and that that can be, that concession is given to the community owned company. The community o- owned company, the community actually owns, is an equity holder in the community owned company. The value of that asset allows you to then, um, you know, essentially raise um funds. So, the idea is at by doing this this particular, using this particular approach. Um, it is the 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 community owned company takes responsibility for both the. Uh, you know, the debts, the, you know, the assets and the liabilities. Exactly, it's a management company, very, that's that's exactly the analogy I would use, it's like a management company. Uh, there's equity built in that management company, I'm sorry.
Well, because, you know, from what I was gathering from your presentation, when you looked at Wa Luku Water Company, that wouldn't be a good. Prospect because it it doesn't have good returns relative to what it costs to buy. Um, we don't know that about EMI yet, whether, um, because we don't know that it's a much bigger system, we don't really know the condition of it, what's it's going to cost to repair and. And operate it, but but essentially, that's what I I I guess what I'm getting at is if if we're expecting the council or the, you know, to authorize and the administration to want to buy either entity. Then they're gonna, the administration's gonna have to buy into this idea of 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 uh the concession of of farming out the management. And so have you folks talked to the administration, the mayor about this different model at all?
So, um, let me just sort of clarify one thing and then Shay should probably take the question about having a discussion with the mayor about it. Um, so I I I just want to point out that it's um getting it to a uh profitable entity. Uh, going concern that will actually give a return involves not just thinking about the water per se. But looking a little more expansively and seeing what you could do in terms of, for instance, alternative energy. Or, um, you know, so there are multiple different streams of revenue that you can build off it, and in order to build those streams of revenues, you do have to make an investment. Right, and this sort of speaks to Imogen's point that, um, you know, you 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 can, you if you if you if you raise more money, if you have more in the investor. And investors actually like it because it's a larger check, you're able to do bigger things with it. As opposed to just thinking in terms of the bare bone system, but then you can actually get a return. So, and it's so so our preliminary modeling tells us that you can actually get a return, but you've got to be willing to think big. And think about the vision of what you can do with this, not just think of it as a water system.
Okay, and that would be the CO, and that would be the COC, um, investing more and creating um additional revenue off of.
It would be the investors, the COC is the management company, it would be investors in the COC. So, there would be investors can provide debt or equity, um, you know, you would have equity.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get this clear because I haven't had very much time, but that would be separate from the actual. Original investment that the county would be making in purchasing the system.
Yeah, they and the county will still keep the system effectively, right, you don't transfer the assets over. You essentially hand the mon- management concession over.
No, I understand that, but you'd have to have a long term uh agreement, contract in order for.
Absolutely.
For you to come in and make those kinds of investments.
Exactly, so you would have a long term agreement on that.
Okay.
Uh, Shay, you want to address the mayor question?
Um, I know there's short on time, but the the short answer is no, and the long answer is the community needs to first determine what they want to do, and then when they're ready, they need to approach the mayor, basically.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate, uh, next we have uh Member Lee, uh, Member Lee has left, um, Member Malina, you have any questions?
No, no questions, Chair.
Thank you, uh, next we have Member Polton and Member Rollins Fernandez.
Um, thank you, Member Sinanti, um, Member King kind of asked my question, like, I mean, I guess to expand on it, like. Could we apply this right now to what's going on with um Wa Luku Water Company? And if, like, I mean, so you presented this model of what we're looking at. Kind of in real time with the Wa Luku Water Transmission System. But it's like, they're doing this thing here and you're showing us this thing over here, and how do we make the two like?
Look, I can take that, and that, I was sort of managing your expectations a little bit on the Wa Luku Water System slide. Um, and I may have over managed them, um, but the 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 point is. You know, we would really have to get under the hood more to understand what the financials are. What the revenue generating potential is, and then specific, and also what does the community want to do? Right, so the whole point of the ESG analysis in part is, these are the variables, these are the things that you could do. Um, what does, and and these are the returns that they would give, what does the community want to do? Um, and so, you know, and if, so again, wh- what it basically comes down to is. On its own right now, the water system is not going to generate a profit. So there are things that you can do to in increase the revenues associated with that system. What are the trade offs and what are you willing to do, and 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 what are you comfortable doing, and and that would be. A part of the analysis and a part of the process. Um, so it's not that it it it's it's absolutely not that it couldn't be done. Um, but like, something, and and it's, it would be the same if the county just bought it itself, something has to give. Right now, it's basically making, it's it's like, it's costing more to operate the system than it's bringing in. So that would have to change, and how that changes is dependent on all of these variables that we've just discussed. So absolutely could be, the 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 process of the analysis absolutely could be applied to the Wa Luku Water System. But it may be that at the end of that process, the decision is, okay, this isn't going to be. An extremely profitable asset, this has to be run in a different way.
And, um, in the beginning, Ms. Chan Hodges said that, um, you know, the community decides, if the community doesn't want five G, then it won't be five G. Then I was wondering, what are the alternatives?
So, there's lots of different alternatives in terms of the technology, right, um, they're they're using. They're using technology right now and they barely have internet access in East Maui, and I think people want more internet access. So there are lots and lots, and the one thing I think is good to remember is that the technology has not really advanced as uh Matt Rosner, so it is, you know, it's like a hundred and fifty years old. There's a lot between the eighteen fifties and now that you can use in between, and it doesn't have to be. Tomorrow's technology, it could still be five years ago technology, or it could be technology we create, because things are happening all the time.
Okay, thank you, that was my time.
Mahalo, Member Polton, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair, and mahalo everyone for um your excellent presentations. Okay, so I have two questions that I I'm probably only going to have time for those two. Uh, my first question, I think, you know, in, um, I think it was uh Shay's uh opening comments about, um. The community determining who the community is, um. In, um, Molokai is trying to, well, has put together a. Renewable energy co-op. Community based renewable energy co-op and, um. In determining who gets to have a seat on the board, who are the members, who gets a vote, who gets a say. Uh, it can get very um political and um also trying to, um. Integrate safeguards to ensure that it is always in the hands and control of the community and not. Influence. The second quote is regarding the long term concession. Um, and so I I I understand that the revenue would then go to the community owned company. Um, and basically, the community owned company would um manage as in, um. Take in the revenue, pay for the expenses. And manage the the system, um, unless it would be up to that community owned company to work out some kind of partnership. With the the company to figure out how, you know, they would interface, okay, whoever would like to answer those questions?
Uh, I just want to clarify, so are you asking that, um, the community is a an equity holder in the community owned company? Therefore, if the community owned company produces, um, you know, profit profits, it can distribute dividends. To the community itself directly, so there is a direct economic link. The uh, the county has provided a license, uh, I mean, a concession to the community owned company, the management company. The county can also become a stakeholder, like for instance, the county can choose to give, um, you know, the a a a a a, for instance, a a loan. To the community owned company and in return get in uh interest payments back, and that has, we've done this on certain deals, for instance, as well. So, the way the county wants to engage and become a stakeholder is something that the county has to decide. Um, you know, uh, but certainly, the idea is if we, if everybody works together. Um, and, you know, works in the right direction, um, I think you've got a much better shot at getting something that's going to be very successful. And provide benefits to all the stakeholders, uh, and I think the 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 Maori uh milk uh um COC is a very good example of it. Um, you know, they started off and within, you know, a decade, um, they're generating two hundred and fifty million in revenues. So, it's very possible to do it, I think the trick is, you have to get everybody working in the same direction instead of fighting with each other. And that's where creating a structure where people's incentives are aligned. Um, and perhaps Shay can talk a little bit about this in terms of the advantages of this arms length um direction, because, you know.
My timer went off, but uh Chair, if you would allow uh Ms. Chan Hodges to briefly touch upon the um the question. And um to clarify, the question was about who who's actually going to be doing the work, would it be the county or the community owned company as in? Um, man, like, um, maintaining the system.
So, um, I I'll take that, Shay wants me to take that. Um, so, yeah, so to answer your question, uh, Councilmember, um, so, for the most part, the community would actually be doing the work, the community owned company would actually be doing the work. Um, and just to address your other question really quickly, which you talked about the the um co-op on Molokai. The the hard work is actually that part with the community figuring out who gets, you know, who is to share what, but that's not for. Sort of the overall sits on their side, the committees were asked to figure that out and we need to, you know, people need to work on them on that, but that that is actually the hard work. Though did that part, which which you guys in Mauka have already done, um, so that's good.
Mahalo, Mr. Chan Hodges, mahalo, Chair.
Rollins Fernandez, excellent, uh, great questions, committee, and so at this point, uh, we wanted to, we've reached the end of. Of our meeting today, so we wanted to, uh, mahalo, uh, Dr. Gita Swami, uh, Ms. Imogen Smith. Uh, both Ian and Shay Chan Hodges and and Mr. uh Rosner for being here. And for their presentations today, excellent uh presentation and very timely uh to what's going on in our our community. So again, uh, mahalo for for sharing your manao today with us, um. Thank you, uh, with that, members, um, if there are no objections, the Chair would like to defer this.